Thank you again for attending a Gilbert Town meeting and for your participation in local government. Welcome to Town Hall, and thank you for attending a Gilbert Public Meeting. Here are a few things to know. The meeting will be held in the council chambers. Should additional seating be needed, you may watch from our lobby. If you would like to speak at today's meeting, you'll find both agendas and speaker cards at the front counter in the lobby. Our staff is here to assist you fill out the cards and find the corresponding agenda items. All speaker cards from the public must be submitted prior to the start of the meeting. The Town Council is committed to providing an environment where everyone's voice is heard during public meetings. In an effort to preserve order and decorum, here are a few rules and guidelines we ask everyone to follow during the meeting. You may bring signs and similar items into the council chambers, but these items may not be held above shoulder height or otherwise obstruct the view or block the path of members of the audience. Disruptions impact the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and detract from the purposes of the meeting. Therefore, disruptive behavior, including, but not limited to, cheering, shouting, booing, or the use of profanity, is prohibited. Applause is only permissible during the presentations and proclamations portion of the agenda. Threats directed toward any individual or group are prohibited. Speakers may not campaign or advocate for or against candidates for office or ballot issues or otherwise attempt to influence the outcomes of elections. A full list of meeting rules is displayed at the entrance of the council chambers. During the public hearing portion of the agenda and during communications from citizens, when your name is called, please come forward to the podium, then state your name, your town of residence, and begin speaking. Remarks shall be limited to three minutes. Citizens who are at the meeting-
Okay. Thank you. I'll call to order the regular meeting of the Gilbert Town Council, June 10th, 2025. We'll begin with an invocation by Pastor Thor Stranholt of Valor Christian Center. Pastor.
Good evening. This time I figured out how to work this microphone. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the Town Council, thank you so much for having me back. I promise I won't exceed my 92nd time here tonight, but I'm excited about what's happening in our world today, including what's happening in our great city of Gilbert. As we go through life, we experience many challenges, and hopefully we regain wisdom as we make our mistakes, and I thank God for the miracles he's done in my life. As I am closer now to 80 than I've ever been before, I have learned and experienced many things throughout my years. For example, up until the time I was 17, I was raised in seven different homes, had no family roots, and I was an orphan of sorts. I became a high school dropout. I joined the military and was a Vietnam War zone veteran. I became what I call an unconfessed alcoholic. To make my story short, I know that through divine intervention with God, God can turn our mistakes into miracles and our losses into gain, and that applies to every one of us here. When I finally turned my life over to God, he took a total turnaround, and through his grace, I got my high school diploma. I went on to higher learning. I became a doctor. I took care of patients for 40 years and used my practice as a ministry to help many come to salvation. In 2013, I thought I was retiring. I tried to retire three times, but it never took. When I finally came here to Arizona from California, I became the Associate Pastor here of Valor Christian Center right here in Gilbert in 2014. I was actually ordained in 1997. I learned that when it comes time to make decisions in life, it's time to talk to God and get his wisdom. Proverbs 24:3 says that "through wisdom a house is built, and by understanding it is established." Let's pray. Lord, I pray for our Town Council right now, and I thank you, Lord, for your wisdom to rest upon each one of them concerning the decisions about our great town and how to make it an even greater place to live and to do business. Father, I thank you, Lord, you give them wisdom beyond their years and all the decisions that they have to make. And Father God, we'll be carefully give you all the praise, all the honor, and all the glory for it, and everyone agreed by saying, amen, and amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Our pledge of allegiance will be led by Councilmember Torgerson.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll have a roll call.
Mayor Scott Anderson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Bobby Buckley.
Here.
Councilmember Chuck Bon Giovanni.
Here.
Councilmember Kenny Buckland.
Here.
Councilmember Young Kaprowski.
Here.
Councilmember Monte Lyons.
Here.
And Councilmember Jim Torgerson.
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you. We'll move into presentations and proclamations. I believe we have a video we're going to show before we actually read the proclamation tonight.
I think one of the things that I've struggled with is getting a good night's rest. It's constant. It never goes away. Amy would get lost in this house. She wouldn't be able to find the bathroom. Or she'd get up in the middle of the night and maybe walk out into the garage or want to get out. For me, it's the hardest job I've ever had in my life. You have a choice when you hear news. I think one of the things that I've struggled with is getting a good night's rest. It's constant. It never goes away. Amy would get lost in this house. She wouldn't be able to find the bathroom. Or she'd get up in the middle of the night and maybe walk out into the garage or want to get out. For me, it's the hardest job I've ever had in my life. You have a choice when you hear news like this, that your most precious person in your world has been diagnosed with a terminal illness. You can take the high road or you can take the low road. I chose to take the high road. I felt like the more people that knew about this disease and how they can understand and how to communicate with Amy and other folks who also have Alzheimer's is one thing that I can do. They're walking the streets, and they're probably folks with some form of dementia that you run across every day.
My uncle, Robert, who lives in Oregon, had dementia.
My mother was diagnosed and suffered through Alzheimer's.
We frequently respond to homes, loved ones, and also care facilities that have people suffering from dementia.
Watching the progressive nature of dementia take over a loved one is devastating.
They look normal. They don't look as if there's, you know, anything wrong with them physically or even mentally, but there really is.
And if there was a way that the community or people could recognize those people, it's going to make it much easier for us to get through maybe some challenging situations. I thought, you know, the Town of Gilbert needs to know more about Alzheimer's. What's another way to get the community involved in this thing? Well, how about we have a proclamation? So what I did is I went through all the process to get approved to have a proclamation that the month of November is going to be recognized as Alzheimer's Awareness and Caregivers Month for 2023.
And now therefore, I Chuck Bon Giovanni for Bridget Peterson, Mayor of the Town of Gilbert. Arizona do hereby proclaim November 2023 as Alzheimer's and Caregiver Month.
I think the impact of Gilbert as a town being dementia-friendly certified, what that does is it helps certainly our town employees understand that to learn and recognize people that might be suffering from dementia so that we can better learn how to interact with them to have a more successful outcome.
I think we as citizens have a responsibility to be sensitive to our communities. It takes a community to take care of a community.
And I think bringing awareness to this brings dignity to the human beings that are affected by it because these are people. They're not. They're not a waste of time. They're a valuable use of your time when you know what to do when you encounter them.
Really a beautiful opportunity for us as a town to come together and say, this is important, and there's a lot we can do to, again, be really, show a lot more empathy for our whole community that's suffering from this.
I made a promise to myself that whatever I could do to ease the process for another person that's suffering out there, that I would do it. And if this is it, then thank you, Mom.
Thank you.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni. I'd like to ask everyone who helped make this possible to come on down. Everyone whose Alzheimer's or dementia has affected your life, please come on up here with us. All right. Gilbert, a dementia-friendly city. Whereas dementia is growing public health concern that affects over 6 million Americans and their families, including many right here in Gilbert. And whereas June is recognized as Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, a time to raise awareness, foster understanding, and encourage community action around Alzheimer's disease and other forms of dementia. And whereas Gilbert is committed to creating an inclusive, compassionate, and supportive environment for individuals living with dementia and those who care for them. And whereas becoming a dementia-friendly city means engaging the entire community, including local government, healthcare providers, first responders, businesses, and residents to build awareness, reduce stigma, and improve accessibility. And whereas this designation reflects the Town of Gilbert's continuing efforts to promote education and increase public understanding, implement practices that support aging in place with dignity. And whereas Gilbert proudly joins a growing national movement of cities committed to enhancing quality of life for people affected by dementia through meaningful partnerships, thoughtful planning, and community engagement. Therefore, I Chuck Bon Giovanni for Mayor Scott Anderson of the Town of Gilbert do hereby proclaim June 2025 as Gilbert, a dementia-friendly city, and encourage our residents, businesses, and organizations to join in in supporting individuals and families impacted by dementia. Steve, you want to say a word?
Just a couple. I just want to say thank you to the town, to everyone that has been involved in this. This has been going on for a year or so now, and I remember a proclamation, I think it was the 2023 proclamation we talked about. At some point in time, we're going to be up here again, and we're going to have this award. Sorry. I'm just going to say thank you, and I just ask all of you to take the high road with me. Thanks.
Councilmember Kaprowski is going to talk a little bit more about the initiative. And then if we could, just go around real quick and just say how your life's been affected, whether it's your mother, father, friend, or someone like that.
I feel that this initiative is very important for the Town of Gilbert to take that leadership step forward, not only because we are a government agency, but because we have employees, first responders within our community that can better understand this disease and better serve our citizens and help provide resources or links to each other to help provide greater compassion and care to our community members. So I just want to thank everyone that has been involved and look forward to the future initiatives where we will have training for our town employees in parks and recreation, in our police and fire department, so that we can better serve our community. And also want to mention that some of our programming for parks and recreation, such as our Gilbert Symphony Orchestra and our conductor Martin Province is here. And being able to modify those sessions to help be more opening to and welcoming to people that may have dementia.
My name is Herman Kluck. I met Steve Adams and got to know him really well at the Sons of American Legion, post 39, at a lasagna bake-off for a lost friend of ours. And then I got to know Amy, and I've tried to be there as a friend to help him through what he's going through, and also this awareness. I've been a member of the Town of Gilbert, meaning a citizen, for over 25 years now, and this is a great community, and we need to come together and help those less fortunate. Thank you.
My mother.
Hi. I actually lost my mom in 2008, and since then, I've lost four other family members. And I met Steve being a part of the committee for the Alzheimer's Walk, and we've become good friends since then, so.
Hi, my name is Pam Eisenberg. I work at the Alzheimer's Association. I live here in Gilbert, and I'm very pleased to know Steve and Amy and all the other families. And if you didn't know, there are over 161,000 people in Arizona that are diagnosed right now. So yes, we need all take the high road because it not just affects the city, but it affects all cities around Maricopa County and all over this great state.
Hi, my name is Irene Dyer. I've lived in Gilbert for 25 years, and I'm a full-time caregiver for my husband.
My name is Patty Velaskis, and I lost my husband to Alzheimer's in December of last year.
John Hagaman, friend and Steve's neighbor, so we were friends with Amy.
I'm Marty Province, and as Chuck said, or Young said, I'm the conductor of the Gilbert Symphony Orchestra. My dad died of dementia a couple of years back and had another good friend, Otis Elliott, who many of you may have known, who lived in Gilbert, who I used to visit once a week as he suffered with Parkinson's. Chuck did ask me to say a couple of things about the orchestra, so I made notes because Young knows I talk too long if I don't have notes. First of all, full disclosure, I am not a resident of Gilbert. I live in that city just to the west of us. But I was Director of Music at Gilbert Methodist Church, First United Methodist Church of Gilbert, for 10 years. I actually quit that job so that I could travel back home more often to North Carolina and help my mom with my dad. Then COVID hit, and I couldn't fly. So I've driven to North Carolina about four times a year for the last four or five years. We would love to invite you to the Gilbert Symphony Orchestra. We start up again October the 12th, and we are debuting the Gilbert Symphony Chorus. Anyone who likes to sing is welcome to log onto our website and write to me. It will be an all Americana concert. The first piece, the audience will actually end up singing the Star Spangled Banner. The last piece on the concert is when the chorus debuts, the words of Thomas Jefferson to stirring music, the opening line, "The God who gave us life gave us liberty at the same time." It should be a wonderful concert, the first of four for this year, and we would love to see you there. It's free. You will get your money's worth.
Amy Ashworth, my father-in-law. He passed several years ago, and I was his caretaker before he passed.
Hi, Rob Duggan, Fire Chief. My mother-in-law diagnosed early onset Parkinson's. With that comes dementia later in life. Her last three years really suffered through that and a lot of support from the family. My aunt diagnosed with Lewy body, which essentially leads to a dementia-like effect at the end of their life. Then my father, just under a year ago, passed away from the effects of dementia, so well connected to it. But please understand, your first responders, they are trained, they are prepared to take care of all of your loved ones in this space. So please rest assured that we're doing everything we can to train and teach our individuals how to manage this population.
This is going to go quick. My name is Mark Young. I am a healthcare provider. I've helped over 500 families with some sort of dementia and cognitive impairment. And most recently, I'm assisting my wife, who's her mother's struggling.
My name is Scott Krieger. I'm a neighbor of Steve Adams. When I first moved into the neighborhood 22 years ago, Steve was the first person I actually met. I think I actually met him before I actually unloaded the truck. And I got to know Steve and Amy extremely well. And then when the news came about Amy's situation, it really, obviously, you feel like it's like a dear friend and a sister that it actually affects you. So with Steve and his unconditional love to Amy, it's nice to see what he's doing for her and for all the people with dementia and Alzheimer's.
I'm Larry Calkins. My father passed in 2009 from the effects of vascular dementia. And my mother took care of him, but I also helped my mother out by bringing him to my home and caring for him as well. So I also have recently started with the Town of Gilbert in terms of volunteering as a caregiver group leader. And so I'm happy to be here.
Hi, my name is Sonia Salam, and I'm in home care. I got into it very recently. I come from corporate America as people who look at me and say, why do you dress so fancy? The reason why I got into home care is because my mom has dementia, and I nearly lost her last year. So that's the reason why I'm here. And we've served multiple, you know, patients who have dementia, you know, navigate this world with dignity and compassion. And that's my mission, to serve them. Thank you.
Ready for the photo? We're going to do a photo. If you guys can all make a couple rows for us.
Thank you all for being here tonight. Next, we'll have a presentation and update on the performance management program. I think I see Eugene coming up. Mary's here and Amy.
Yes, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Eugene Mahia, Chief AI Strategist and Transformation Officer in the Town Manager's Office. We're excited to share some of our most recent updates with the performance management program. There's been a lot of work and effort done by our core performance team, as well as Amy Ashworth, who is going to be sharing the presentation with you today. She is our core performance management, core performance manager. Sorry about that. But we wanted to kind of give you a little refresher on what performance management actually is before we jump into that. And it's where we're continuously using data and analytics to set goals, measure progress, and make informed decisions. And with that, as you may recall, we were here in September of 2024, where we presented our first set of public dashboards for Police and Public Works. And since that time, we have onboarded four more departments that have gone through that process. There's been a lot of ongoing effort to build a robust framework to really streamline those processes, as well as embrace iteration to make it successful as we can to really automate some of the things that are happening behind the scenes. With that onboarding of those four departments, which you're going to see today in the presentation, we've been, we're getting close to launching 16 new dashboards that'll be available very soon, as of tomorrow, to the public, which Amy's going to share with you. And with that, we have three, sorry, three, yeah, three more departments that are in an early phase of the onboarding right now, and then four additional departments that will be kicking off in the next few weeks. So just wanted to help provide and share some of that background before we really jump into the presentation. But again, just the recognition and all the effort that has gone in by Amy, the core performance team, as well as a lot of stakeholders to really get us to this point, to use this information to really drive us forward. So with that, I will turn it over to Amy.
Thank you, Eugene, for that comprehensive update since our last council. I'm excited to share important updates on our performance management program with you today. We will look at our redesigned dashboard portal, our updated templates. We'll also announce our new public dashboards and our redesign of the PD public dashboards. These improvements really reaffirm our commitment to transparency and accountability and ultimately cultivating a culture of data-driven governance. For those whom I haven't met, my name is Amy Ashworth, the core performance manager here at Gilbert. I joined the team in June of 2023. So I'm actually on my, my second year here with the town, very excited for all the work that we've been doing. I bring over 20 years of experience in technology and program management. Today, I'm excited to represent our performance management program and the dedicated team behind it. Our core performance team consists of 22 talented members who collaborate to oversee daily operations and ensure we maintain high standards in our performance management efforts. As we explore the history of our program and culture, let's appreciate the progress that we've made since launching the City of the Future Initiative in 2018. From 2019 to 2021, we developed pilot programs and governance strategies that have really laid the groundwork for what we present today. Our core team was formed in 2022, and the public release of our first dashboards in 2023 and 2024 marked a significant milestone. In 2024, we also focused on building our program infrastructure, departmental onboarding, and redesign of the performance management portal. These steps, again, paved the way for further integration with our AI strategy and transformation division. Each step is essential for creating a transparent, efficient, and data-informed environment for our Gilbert community. We maintain that this momentum as we discuss the performance management portal. So as we dig in, I want to highlight three key things that we're really excited about for the performance management portal. We simplified the user experience. So now performance dashboards are organized by department, enabling people to quickly gather the data that they need. We've enhanced and really prioritized consistent updates to transparency into the program onboarding process. And when new dashboards will be released. Additionally, we have enhanced our program information. So now that you can find on the page that information about our program, the organizational structure, and a mechanism for feedback, we really value your input and we want to make sure that our communication goes two ways. Sorry. So in all of this, we were really, we were really tasked with the town, the Town Manager's Office to unify our designs across six performance management departments that were currently underway. And so we gathered a task force of diverse individuals, data stewards, developers, tech, tech leads, and communications engagement, communications engagement experts. And really, we were focused on co-developing through multiple workshop sessions, the, oh, sorry. Is that me? Is that me? Sorry. So through the workshops, we really, we worked together to develop a dashboard template that would emphasize accessibility, functionality, visual consistency, and user-centered focus. After finalizing those templates, the dashboard developers worked through standardizing new and existing dashboards, and will continue this work until all the public dashboards meet this standard. This really showcases our true partnership, and I look forward to demonstrating how these changes will improve our current public dashboards. So as we delve into the new dashboard design, first, I want to focus on three key aspects that will enhance the user experience and engagement. We prioritize clear contextual storytelling. Our aim was to provide immediate clarity to anyone who on-service performance, ensuring residents and website visitors can grasp key information at a glance. Next, we designed the, the dashboards to be intuitive. We wanted to make sure that the navigation was crafted to be straightforward, allowing users to seamlessly explore visualizations. This is crucial to ensuring that diverse audiences, regardless of their familiarity with the data, could find what they need. Finally, we committed to a modern aesthetic that aligns with our Gilbert's branding standards. By leveraging advanced technology and best practices, we not only engage users, but we also elevate their experience through visual appeal. Together, these elements will transform how our community interacts with performance data, ensuring it's both insightful and user-friendly. So now let's explore some of the elements of our public dashboard design. We've highlighted Gilbert branding to ensure that our dashboards have clear, concise titles for both the dashboard and the visualization. This clarity is essential for effective communication. Next, we've added interactive elements so users can engage with the data using filters and accessing more detailed information as needed. This interaction makes the data more meaningful to our audience. Finally, we created a responsive design and layout that includes color coding to indicate target statuses. This not only enhances visual appeal, but also quickly conveys information to our residents and website visitors. This design will help everyone understand service performance at a glance while still offering the opportunity to explore the data further, aligning with our commitment for transparency. So we also wanted to talk through a little bit about our dashboard process. It's crucial to understand that while every department undergoes the same framework, the amount of information can vary significantly. So in our first, we'll outline the steps that are involved. In data governance and source review, these serve as our foundation. We ensure and verify that data we use is accurate and reliable. In the selection of department goals phase, we align metrics with each department's specific objectives, ensuring they're relevant and clear. Creation of data visualizations, that is where the magic happens. We help to transform raw data into visual formats that enable quick comprehension. In Phase Four, we really consolidate everything into a cohesive dashboard that is user-friendly and visually appealing. It's important to note that it's not just about the visuals. We also help develop narratives that explain the data's implications. And finally, we embed these dashboards into the departmental websites on the performance management portal. This is ensuring enhancing access for both residents and stakeholders. By following these steps, we can ensure that our dashboards are not only functional, but also engaging and informative. As part of our, as part of our onboarding process, each department has carefully identified essential service line information to share with the public, demonstrating our commitment to transparency and resident engagement. On June 11, as Eugene mentioned, we will launch 16 performance dashboards through the newly updated performance management portal. These dashboards will provide clear insights into our operations and priorities. Now remember, these indicators are not just numbers. They do reflect real experiences and outcomes for our residents. A key aspect of our program is to continuously evaluate how these elements work together to enhance our service delivery. So now I'm going to talk about the ongoing assessment of our data through the police department and the exciting updates to their dashboards. As we evaluate our data, it's essential to emphasize the design practices adopted. I really want to highlight the Gilbert Police Department's journey. They launched their stats program in 2020 and significantly advanced by releasing their public dashboards in late '23 and '24. Their efforts have enhanced the performance management program, and they are a key partner to our improvement process. So in Phase One, we sat down with them and we assisted the department in identifying key, key dashboards for relaunch, distinguishing those from internal and external. In the update phase, we collaborated with the department's dashboard designers to revise dashboards according to the new design standards, including metrics such as response times, accountability standards, and benchmark. On June 11, utilizing our updated portal, the PD will launch, relaunch its site with three redesigned dashboards and one new public dashboard with the goal of consistent user experience across jurisdictions. So they really set forth a goal of wanting to have consistency from when you looked at Chandler PD to Gilbert to Phoenix to Scottsdale. The work, this work with the PD reflects our commitment to transparency and continuous improvement in presenting data to the public. And last but not least, our progress is driven by the exceptional efforts of our department dashboard developers, who manage data with precision and integrity, collaborate across departments to create meaningful, actionable insights, embrace evolving standards and technologies with agility. Their dedication to transparency, quality, and innovation forms the foundation of Gilbert's performance management program. We extend our sincere gratitude to each team member for their resilience, creativity, and service to the Gilbert community. This work is truly people-powered. While not all contributors are listed here, our developers, along with the core performance team, other internal partners remain at the heart of our continued success. As we conclude our presentation, thank you for your attention today. If you have questions or would like more information, please email us at coreperformance@gilbertaz.gov. We're here to support and enhance our community's performance management. More resources and updates are available through our website links provided. And the portal will be live June 11 without password restrictions. So if you do go to that today because you're curious, there are some password restrictions on our performance management portal until we had this opportunity to speak to you. And thank you again. And I'll now open the floor for any questions.
Thank you, Amy. Council, you have questions or comments? Councilmember Kaprowski?
Hi, Amy. Thanks for that presentation. I think this data is really good for the town to have. My, my comment is that a lot of the data that you shared seems like they are key performance indicators internally for Gilbert. And I wanted to understand if there were going to be future iterations that had more regional, state, and national benchmarks.
Absolutely. We, we are partnered with VBC. I know that OMB does have partnerships with them. We would love to see additional regional benchmarking. There are a lot of performance management programs. We've, we had the opportunity to go to Transforming Local Government Conference. There are, we're building partnerships with Glendale, City of Glendale, with some of the departments that are forming around the city as well. So absolutely.
And, and one more question is in terms of the integration of maps or data that's better represented visually in a map format, do you see enhancements or maybe connections or links to availability of that type of data?
Yeah, absolutely. We do, on some of the dashboards that are being released, they do have Maps 311 information. We obviously want to balance privacy with, with information that we're putting out there because, you know, as much as, as we would like to share everything and be incredibly transparent, we still have to ensure that we're protecting the information of the residents of Gilbert. So for some information, we'll be able to get down to block level. For others, especially things like when we start working with fire, they have very sensitive HIPAA data, and so we will not be able to share map-related information for that.
Thank you.
At least publicly. Internally, absolutely, but publicly.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Patrick, this might be something to share with the league at some point, I think.
Yeah.
A presentation of some kind.
Absolutely. And Mayor, Councilmember Kaprowski, to your point, there's quite a few of them that have maps where it will geospatially represent the data, and then you can drill down. And there's a point when, and to protect privacy interests, it will only go so far. But you'll be able to see in a lot of the dashboards, the type of information that you just mentioned. And we will continue to roll this out across the organization. In PD, you're going to see a lot of their dashboards are things that are going to be of great importance to the community around different types of crime, and severity, and some of them, time of day, and some heat maps on where that's occurring. But I wanted to recognize Amy and Eugene and Mary Goodman and the entire team. They have done a really good job with this and worked very hard with that team to create, to pull this information together, to pull the data sets together, to create visualization, ways to visualize them that are easy to understand in the various areas you're looking at, how we're doing, or how a certain aspect within our community is doing, like certain crime stats. And our hope with these dashboards, and we've called them dashboards because their goal is to be simple and easy to understand, like dashboard instruments on your car, and raise awareness and create greater transparency for the community on core areas of importance, whether it be performance of the local government, or whether it be items of great importance to our community. And then in addition, when we take actions and let's say we put, put in place a special initiative and bring additional resources to bear, create that connection for the residents on why we're doing that, because there's a certain indicator that's at a level that we feel is higher than it should be. And this is why we're expending additional dollars or putting additional resources and effort into that. But they've just done a fantastic job, and it's an organization-wide effort. And I'm just very proud of the hard work they've done.
Thank you. Yes, congratulations to the whole team. Thank you very much, Amy.
Thank you.
Before we move on to the public hearing section, I do have a statement to read into the record about an item. Zoning Case Z24-22 Bellistoria Apartments was originally continued by the Town Council to the June 10 public hearing. However, this item was not agendized for today's public hearing. This zoning case will be considered at the June 24 Town Council meeting. We appreciate your patience as town staff works closely with the applicant to bring the project forward. So it'll be on the 24th versus tonight. So it'll be on the 24th versus tonight. Other public hearing items, uh, are there any items that any council members would like to have pulled separately? Understanding that Item Eight and Ten, Staff is requesting continuance to the 24th with Any other items to pull? Oh, we'll get to that one. I'll open the public hearing on Items Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven, Nine, and Eleven. And entertain a motion. That's, 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 uh, Streetlight Improvement District. Okay, we'll pull Nine. So I'm looking for a motion, including postponement of Eight and Ten to the June 24th meeting.
Mayor Anderson, could you close the public hearing before the motion?
Yes, we'll close the public hearing.
I'd like to make a motion to, uh, accept Three, Four, Five, Six, Seven. Continue Item Eight. Discuss Item Nine. Continue Item Ten and accept Item Eleven.
There's a motion. Is there a second?
I second.
Motion by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Vice Mayor Buckley. Motion carries seven zero. We'll return then to Item Nine. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the Town Council. Nicole Russell, Senior Planner with Development Services. The applications before the Town Council this evening are GP 2406 and Z 2417 for Sheffield The general plan amendment is requested, that is being requested, is for a change from residential eight to 14 dwelling units per acre to residential five to eight dwelling units per acre, and a rezoning with the PAD from multifamily low to single-family detached. There are two deviations that are being proposed. The allowance of two-story homes along the northern property boundary, and the allowance of 62% retention on the front of the site where 50% is allowed. Here is an aerial map showing where the site is located. It's approximately .3 of a mile to the southeast of the intersection of Gilbert Road and Civic Center Drive, just south of the Wyatt Apartment Complex, which is on the next slide, showing the MFM zoning to the north, the MFL, the multifamily large, I apologize, for the subject site, which is asking to, meaning requested to be changed. This is the showing the surrounding area. You've got, uh, single-family neighborhoods predominantly to the east and to the west. To the north, like I said before, you've got an apartment complex. Um, and to the south, you have the Laurens Institute for Education. Here is the development plan. The applicant is requesting the minor general plan amendment and rezone to develop a 67-lot single-family development. As you can see in the red box, that is the deviation request for lots 121 through 124 to be two-story. Uh, there is a portion of the code that prohibits more than one story next to multifamily medium zoning. So that's why the applicant is requesting a deviation. The applicant is also requesting a deviation for the retention on the front of the site adjacent to Gilbert Road. Here's the project data table showing what the LDC standards are for the single-family detached zoning district and the proposed, uh, changes, the deviations to the, uh, single-family detached PAD. The applicant has agreed to limit the homes to two stories, 30-foot height. And again, we've got the setbacks on there and the 62% increase, or this, the increase in the retention on the front of the property. Here is the single-family parking plan. Um, the applicant worked extensively with staff to alter the design in order to accommodate the required parking on the site. As you can see on your screen, on non-trash days, parking provided in the community will be 195 spaces. Here are some of the entry, the entry gate monument signage and the typical lot layouts and colors and materials. A virtual public meeting was held on June 20th of 2024. As of this meeting, staff has received seven letters of support from neighbors in the area and six letters of support from neighbors, or businesses in the area. Should the Town Council find that this is an appropriate designation for the general plan and land use and change the zoning, staff provided stipulations or conditions of approval in the staff report, I'm happy to answer any questions. My applicant is here and has a presentation should the council wish to see it.
Questions for Nicole? Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Um, I honestly had to read this about four times because, um, we're looking to go from apartments to single-family homes, right?
Mayor Anderson and Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Um, the, the previous approval was for an apartment complex that was going to be rent to, uh, rental homes, just the small homes. Um, so yes, there was essentially, we consider that a multifamily. It's not quite an apartment complex, but it was a multifamily development.
Thanks for, I thought I was dreaming, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions? Yes, Vice Mayor.
Um, I, I just have a question. Can you go back to the site plan? Yes, that one. The, where the outline in red, that will be the, um, is that two-story apartments? Three? Or, or those homes? I just want to get back in my head what, where everything is.
Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Buckley. The, I can understand how there would be confusion with the language of that. I apologize. The portion of the code requires that any SFD development that's adjacent to multifamily, which is the Wyatt Apartment Complex to the north, it can't be more than a one-story home. So the applicant is requesting the deviation to allow two-story homes throughout the entire development instead of having just the parcel or the lots one through 24 be single-story while everything else is two-story. Does that answer your question?
Okay, okay. So maybe I heard you wrong. Is this a singles, I mean, a two-story, single-family home development? There are no apartment, apartments in here. Townhomes, did I hear that? Okay.
Previous approval was townhomes.
Okay, gotcha. So this is all, I mean, it's, um, it's not commercial, it's already zoned, and we're just making amendments to that zoning.
Mayor Anderson, Vice Mayor Buckley, they are requesting to change the land use designation from the multifan, from a higher residential number to the smaller number for the five to eight dwelling unit, units per acre in order to develop a single-family detached neighborhood. So they are, they're single-family homes, and they will be for sale, not for rent, is I understand it, at this point.
Okay. Well, that, that, you, you said it all in those three words, single-family, well, four words, detached neighborhood. So excellent. All right, well, thank you.
I, I just wanted to clarify something that, that you just mentioned versus what's shown on the screen. What you just mentioned was that all 67 lots could be two-story homes? Or is it only the 24 lots adjacent to the apartment complex?
Mayor Anderson, Councilmember Kaprowski, uh, the single-family detached zoning district does allow for three-story homes. The applicant is proposing two-story homes throughout the development. That deviation is requested in order to, for uniformity, so they're all going to be two-story.
Other questions? Council, would you like to have a presentation by the applicant? Thank you, Nicole. I'll bring it back for discussion and/or a motion, Council. Councilmember Torgerson?
I just want to find a little joy in the fact that this is being zoned as single-family rather than multifamily. And probably the first time in many years that we've seen something like this. And to have, uh, to have somebody try and bring a little of that spirit of homeownership back to Gilbert, I, I truly appreciate.
I think I again failed to close the public hearing, so I'll close the public hearing. Any other just comments? Action. Councilmember Torgerson?
I'd like to move to accept Item Nine as written.
I'll second that.
And move by Councilmember Torgerson, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni. Motion carries seven zero. We'll move on to, um, Items 12 and 13. Of course, do we need an actual motion to recess? Yes, so I'll take a motion to recess the regular meeting and convene in special meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Move by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, seconded by Councilmember Kaprowski. All in favor? Any opposed? We are in special meeting. Items 12 and 13, the budget. Patrick, are you going to do this, or is Kelly?
Mayor, I was curious which one you were going to start with. If it's a secondary property tax, we'll let Kelly handle it. If it's the 13, the budget, then I'll skip this off.
Okay. 12, we'll start with 12.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. We've got one presentation for both. Patrick, if you want to start the presentation, we just do it together.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. You've heard this from me before, for those, for, for those of us that are tuning in for the first time, to understand the proposed budget for fiscal year '26. I'm going to run through the information I covered in the study session as well as the previous council meeting where we adopted the preliminary budget. And just, it surrounds, uh, some background and economic conditions in Gilbert, a growing community. Every year, we are challenged with a community that has more residents, more businesses, and often the revenues, uh, follow that growth. And so every year, we're stretched to do more with less. This year, we've got some special factors that have made this budget process a much more difficult one for the town and the staff, um, to really understand where we spend these dollars in the areas of greatest importance because we have less revenue to work with this year. Starting with, we, in January of this year, it was, began the loss of the residential rental dollars, um, to the town of Gilbert because of actions by the state legislature. For the upcoming fiscal year, that dollar amount is roughly $9 million in lost ongoing revenue for the town of Gilbert. Also, this, these, let, final phase of the state shared income tax reduction will take a pay, uh, take effect, and that is a loss of roughly $4.5 million for the town of Gilbert. So in total, somewhere between $13.5 and $14 million in funds that we will not have available to us to fund things such as police and fire and general government services. We also have, um, this year, as you're aware, we increased, uh, the sales tax rate to fund projects of critical importance to the community. So we're earmarking those dollars for, uh, the purpose of constructing those projects, and there's going to be a lot more over the coming fiscal year as we move through that process. We're continuing to deal with inflation and supply chain issues. They're not yet fully resolved. There's also some uncertainty that's been put in place by some of the proposed tariffs and how that will impact prices of materials and, and, um, construction items that are sourced from outside the country. We continue to deal with wage inflation and market competition for our employees and increased workload on staff, and so we're trying to find every way possible to balance that workload so that they remain effective and, um, capable of doing the job we need them to do for our community, but to make sure that we also loot, don't lose them to neighboring cities. Again, the competition for, uh, employees is pretty tough right now in the municipal sector, and there are many positions, um, and people that we hire that are unique to the public sector that don't have private sector equivalencies. So it is other cities in our region that we compete with for that talent. We also have a lot of aging infrastructure that continues to put pressure on our budgets to make sure we're maintaining those to a level that we need for this community, for the safety of the residents that are, are using that. And then, there's a lot of uncertainty about a potential recession being called for potentially in the next 12 months because of various conditions and various actions being taken. So we'll continue to monitor that, uh, and we'll continue to stay nimble and make adjustments as necessary to stay within the available funds we have to spend. But we will, um, as we understand those conditions, we'll make sure and keep council apprised of that for the various actions that you will need to take or the various things that we will need to communicate to this community that may impact them and the services they receive from us. Jumping into the next slide, this is another thing we've talked about in understanding some differences in our revenue streams between Gilbert and neighboring communities. One of those is the vehicle license tax funds that we receive. Gilbert is the only city of our peer cities in the region that puts those funds into our streets funds for the maintenance of our streets and the transportation infrastructure. All of our other cities put those into their general fund for general fund uses. That's about $14 million that we don't have available of our general fund purposes that other cities do have. Another thing to understand, while we talk a lot about rates, and rates are, are important, how much money we bring in that we can make available to the services in this community. And if you look at our sales tax per capita for fiscal year '24, actual dollars, Gilbert brings in or has less sales tax available per person to spend on those residents than any of our peer communities at $540, the highest being Scottsdale at $1,379. And then if you look at general fund dollars available per capita, and this, this is fiscal year '25 budget because it's not complete yet, again, Gilbert only has $999 available per resident, the lowest of our peer communities, the highest being Glendale at $1,784 per resident. And again, these are the dollars that we use to fund police, fire, parks, and recreation, a lot of the internal service funds that support those main services, um, that our residents receive. We have less dollars available to us to expend on our residents. So we provide that as just some background information into the budget that's for you, before you tonight for final adoption, um, to help this community understand some of the difficult decisions that have had to be, had to have been made, um, to do the best job we can in maintaining service levels and, and meeting their expectations. With that, I'll turn it over to Kelly Fost to walk you through the rest of the presentation.
Thank you. Thanks, Patrick. Council, I'll be brief because I know you've heard a lot of this information a couple of times, but Gilbert continues to be a best-in-class community. We work really hard to provide high-quality services to our residents with the money that we have. We do zero-based for a third of the organization every year. We continue to do that this year. We did have to add some money into the budget with zero-based because of inflation. It just costs more to do the same things that our departments need to accomplish. Budget process takes about a year, and today is the final step in the process at final adoption. In the recommended budget, there are about 34 additional FTE positions, full-time employees, and about 18 LTAs or limited-term agreement employees, uh, across the whole town that are proposed to help with service delivery. With the capital improvement projects, this is the largest part of the budget. It's about $1.7 billion with the largest investments in our water system, our street system, and then parks and recreation. If we can, most of the projects we're continuing to work on, so we're carrying forward about $1.2 billion of that funding as we continue to work on projects that take more than a year. And then we are adding about $500 million of additional funds, um, for new projects or additional scope on the projects that are moving forward. As you're aware, we do budget the full amount of the projects so that we can issue the contracts and so that we are ensured that we have the funds to complete projects that we start. Even though we will not expend all of this money in one year, the projects are too large for that. for that, and the scope takes several years to complete. If we compare last year's budget with the proposed budget for next year, there's about a hundred and sixteen million dollar difference. Most of that difference is in our capital improvement funding, that bottom line, the infrastructure projects that we're working on. You'll also note that debt service is down by about a million dollars. That's associated with the university building debt getting paid off. Very excited about that here in a couple of days. And property tax for next year is recommended to maintain the rate at ninety-eight cents, which has been the rate for a couple of years. Levy would be thirty-four point eight million dollars. Milestones, we've had a budget study session in April. We had preliminary budget adoption, which set the maximum amount at the May twentieth meeting. And then, the direction of council was to continue and have the final budget adoption here at June tenth. So the documents have been prepared with the direction council has given up to this point. And we have one more exciting thing at the end. Final budget adoption is usually when we give the debut of the budget video, which will go out to the public tomorrow, depending on council's direction tonight. So if we can go. And kudos to our Office of Outreach and Communication. Digital always does such an amazing job with all of their videos and their talent.
Gilbert is moving forward, expanding, improving, and shaping a bright future, and you are a big part of it. The decisions we make today are all about keeping Gilbert a great place to live, work, and connect. Over the past year, big things have happened. Water Tower Plaza got a fresh new look with shaded spaces, improved lighting, and an upgraded splash pad. The Gilbert Advocacy Center is officially underway, creating a safe space for crime victims. And thanks to you, Gilbert's sustainability efforts are thriving. More than sixty tons of glass was recycled at five new convenient drop-off locations. We know costs are rising, and challenges outside our control make things tough. That's why Gilbert is focused on financial responsibility. Paying off the university building debt early saved taxpayers over fifteen million dollars in interest, finishing the debt twenty years ahead of schedule. That means lower long-term costs and a more stable future. And we're just getting started. Freestone Park will break ground in summer twenty twenty-six with a brand-new pickleball complex and splash pad. Next phases of Gilbert Regional Park and Desert Sky Park are breaking ground in spring twenty twenty-six, bringing new gathering spaces and fun for everyone. Public safety remains a priority. Plans are advancing for the next phases of the Gilbert Advocacy Center, along with a new police station in South Gilbert, supporting crime victims and strengthening investigations. We're also adding twenty-five new police positions and seven roles in fire and rescue, ensuring our teams have the resources they need to serve our community. Through it all, Gilbert remains committed to the services you rely on. Investments in infrastructure, sustainability, and financial responsibility will keep our town strong, prepared, and equipped for what's ahead. Your support makes this possible. Together, we're building the future of Gilbert. Stay tuned as these exciting projects take shape.
With that, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Kelly. Questions, counsel? Councilmember Bon Giovanni?
Kelly, mine's more of a comment. I'm not known to be sarcastic at all, but I want to thank the state for taking fourteen million dollars out of our budget because it hurts. It hurts what we want to do. It hurts what we want to do for our services, but most of all, I think it hurts our staff. Now, we have the lowest number of staff members per resident than any other city around us. And I've been on this seat for two and a half years, and I still have not met a staff member who I feel is just doing their job. Our staff is unbelievably professional, dedicated, and always have a positive attitude, and they're working with less. So I just want to say that I appreciate the staff, and all of us do, appreciate every staff member that we have and how hard they work. I've been in business for forty years, and I'm still shocked at the amount of work and professionalism and expertise that our staff has. And I can only apologize for not having the revenue that we need to bring that staffing level up, to give staff members a little bit of a breathe, a breather. And I, bottom of my heart, appreciate the staff for everything that they do.
Thank you.
Councilmember Lyons?
Kelly, do you have the numbers off the top of your head, the difference between our staffing levels in, say, Chandler or Glendale?
I don't have it off the top of my head, I'm sorry.
Would it be fair to say it's about fifteen percent less than, well, we're about fifteen percent less than what they have?
It sounds like you've done the math. It wouldn't surprise me. We are less.
And we do provide trash, which is what, about a hundred employees or about eight percent of our staff? Does that sound about right?
Yeah, where they privatize them.
So to second what Councilmember Bon Giovanni was saying, we do do a lot more with less. And I know you guys have came in and had a request for additional full-time heads. So I would assume we're still, even if we fill all those positions well below what the other communities in the area have. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Torgerson?
Point of order, Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Buckland?
I actually have the data that Councilmember Lyons asked for with me, if you want it shown.
Want to share that real quick? While he's waiting for that, Kelly, could you answer one question for me? The difference in the general fund from last year to what's requested this year looks like it's about sixteen million. What is most of that?
Most of that will be the new requests, the staffing, some additional contractual items for jail fees, police overtime, those types of things, some one-time items. So last year would have had one-time items that finished. This year has additional new one-time items, and then the ongoing items that we've listed.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
I'm going to deviate from my PowerPoint and start here to, based on the point of order, to show you the data that you had asked for. Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, councilmembers, residents, since coming on council, since being elected and taking the seat in January, I've been digging into lots and lots of data. I worked here. Staffing was low then. Still felt that way, but data is what tells the truth, not how we feel. So based on all of the city's ACFS as of June thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, this is the data of staffing per thousand population. It was, there it is. We are at five point eight eight. We're the lowest in Maricopa County. And I think a point of note here with Chandler, so one, we are larger than all of the cities shown here except for Phoenix and Mesa. We have more population, third in Maricopa County, fourth largest in the state now. Chandler is a little smaller than us, but Chandler, who has a larger staff than us, does not provide their own trash service. And I believe, Jessica, we have more than a hundred people, about a hundred people that we staff for a service that Chandler does not, and they still have more staff than we do. The average was like eight point three nine. The high, you can see it, eleven point nine nine. I'm not here to say that we should be the highest. I certainly don't like us being the lowest, but we do need to find the sweet spot. We have been doing more with less for decades on the backs of our staff who are extremely tired. And because we're staffed lean, I know that higher you go up in the chain, the broader the span of control is, larger than it should be, and that creates risk. And as we build, you know, we go into this budget with all of this new CIP for the quality of life standards that we want to have for our children and our grandchildren, we have to make sure that we have leaders that are leading the people and managing the people on those projects, and we have to have staff to do it, and we have to be able to pay for it. So this is the problem, sorry, this is the problem right now. And I can tell you, it's been that way for decades. When I left PD, well, from two thousand ten to two thousand sixteen, when I left, we remained at the same staffing for those six years, but the population grew exponentially. And the problem remains the same. I know we've done better in PD. We're not where we need to be. We're not where we need to be in Public Works. It took us, I think, eight years to inspect our pipe when the goal was six, because we only had three people and one machine with which to do it. It's not acceptable. So we do need a plan moving forward, but Councilmember Lyons, does this help?
Yeah, this is exactly what I was wanting to know.
Okay, and just a couple of other things. Patrick, you had touched, you had shown the general fund dollars per capita. I think what's important note, just have a pointer on it, is right here. There's funding sources that go into the general fund that we do not capture. And you guys can look at that. We don't have property tax. I believe Patrick, correct if I'm wrong, but the reason, I think it was important when you talked about the VLT money that we're using towards streets, but everybody else is using it towards general fund, and that can bring people, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that's because we don't have the special transportation tax that other cities have. So that ties our hands. Is that accurate?
Mayor, councilmembers, Councilmember Buckland, many of the cities do. It's not universal that every one of the peer cities that we benchmark ourselves against does, but many of them do, and that would be accurate in that case.
Okay, thank you. So I think that's important to point out. I know that we are constantly reached out to. I know that the water increases certainly was a sore subject for our citizens. I feel it too. But we do not, there's funding that other cities are utilizing to run their cities and have appropriate staff that we're not. In spite of all that, we're still sitting at the lowest cost for services in town. With the water rates, with the sales tax increase, we're only behind Chandler. And I think this is important as we move into the future and we look at where we are now, where we need to be. But we also have to answer why. Why now? Why did the past council have to raise the sales tax? Why did we have to raise the water rates? There's a lot of information there. I know I'm breaking the rules of PowerPoint, sorry. We've talked about the legislative actions that you see on the left there. I think, I'm hoping we're going to be safe with the food tax. If not, that's a problem. For forty-four years, we were the very lowest sales tax in Maricopa County. We raised it fifty percent from nineteen eighty-four to two thousand, we raised it to one and a half, where it remained until December, when the council had to raise it again, based on the current situation. We don't have a primary property tax. You can see some of the numbers that other cities have with that. North Water Treatment Build, we had to do it, right? We built a lot of infrastructure back in the nineties at the same time. And now, we're having to renovate it, we're having to rebuild, we're having to grow based on population growth and the needs to supply adequate resources to our citizens. Inflation has killed us. If I recall correctly, the public safety building that we built in twenty nineteen was about sixty-one million. That same exact building now in Glendale will cost over a hundred and thirty million dollars. So inflation is killing us. Sewer system, early replacement certainly hurt. And you guys can see the rest of that stuff there. We didn't update our planning and development fees for years. We just are now in the process of doing that, which is excellent. So I just wanted to point these things out because I do think that they matter, they're relevant to why we're where we are now. And it really explains, as you mentioned, the budget's really tight. We don't have a lot of revenue. So we do need to figure this out.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Torgerson?
You know, I just wanted to ask Kelly a couple of things, just for clarity. One would be on item twelve. And just to reiterate basically what you did last time, you and I went over this quite a bit. A reduction in the rate was going to increase our costs of this over the lifetime of these bonds, over ten million, correct?
Yes, because we would have to target a lower rate ongoing, which would change the structure of the future bonds and increase the interest we would have to pay.
And the, basically, to simplify it, if this credit card, as long as it is borrowed upon, we have to make a payment on it. This is not, I've had past councilpeople refer to me, you know, say, just say no, but we have to pay it at some point. And a further reduction would be very detrimental at this point.
Yes, when we do general obligation bonds, we pledge the full faith and credit of the town behind repaying those bonds.
I wanted that clarity for that for people because unfortunately, as much as I despise property tax, especially primary, let alone sec, at least secondary is self-inflicted, and we have to pay the bill. I just wanted a clarity for that for people in general. But I do have an item on the budget itself that I wanted, a singular item. We've gone through, what people don't see is we've gone through an awful lot of discussion. Staff has its own method of going through things. Council brings things forward to add or subtract during the year. But there's one item, I believe, is still lingering, and we discussed it the last time, and that is ADD twenty-six thirty-one. That has not been changed in the budget, has it?
The money is still in the budget. That's for the Lightning truck for the Environmental Service Residential. And council, it wouldn't change any of the numbers in the budget, but council could give direction tonight or at any time that you want that purchased as a different vehicle or you want it held until we have the study session to talk about electric vehicles, and then you could give direction at that time. Or you can pass the budget without any direction, and we would move forward with the Lightning vehicle replacement as, or new purchase as planned.
I would like to propose to everybody here, because there seemed to be a consensus that that particular item is changed over to a diesel or an XLT, a light-duty truck even, because I don't believe a Lightning was intended to tow or haul any substantial weight. So I would like that to be changed because there was a seeming consensus on not investing in electric vehicles.
That could just be as part of the motion, pass the budget with the instruction to do that.
Thank you.
The idea behind that is that we discuss electric vehicles in general at a retreat or?
At a later date, but we do not commit to this being an electric vehicle now. We at least commit to a diesel or whatever would fill that role. And obviously, if there's a change in policy, that could affect it later. But I would like that to reflect something that we talked about and had a general consensus on.
I'd like to hold that conversation or that decision until we have our study session on the topic.
That would be a no without it.
Okay, we'll go forward. Councilmember Lyons?
I just wanted to ask a question. Kelly, you said that the, our credit rating is what ensures that we get the good cost as it relates to the interest rates, correct? And Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, but can you give me, our credit rating for the town is extremely well as it relates to the rest of the country. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have triple-A ratings for our general obligation bonded debt by all three agencies. We also have triple-A ratings for our revenue-backed debt. We also have a triple-A rating. We also have a AAA rating for our excise backed debt. Uh, and that puts us probably, uh, within 50 cities nationally out of over 19,000 with AAA ratings across the board.
And what, what constitutes us being able to receive that kind of rating? What behaviors drive that?
There's a multitude of factors that go into it and I would lean on our finance director, although Hawken isn't here tonight. Kelly could, could also assist. They are looking at the financial policies that are in place for the town. They're looking at town leadership and management and, and the decisions that are made. They look at our fund balances, our reserve funds. There's also a lot of factors that play into it within the community itself in regards to corporations that are present and other criteria that they were, uh, they rate the creditworthiness of Gilbert on. But I would say to answer your question from a high level, it's making, um, very smart, sound fiscal decisions for the community by this government in service to our residents that factors into our credit rating.
So I know that recently in national news, our own country had its credit rating adjusted. But in your opinion and Kelly's opinion, and I don't know which one could give it, how much does this credit rating save us in interest potentially? And I know it would be speculation, but I would like to know.
Yeah, I believe when Hawken last looked at it, it was what 10-ish basis points for a downgrade step. So it depends on how much debt we issue, how much we save, but it is very much worth keeping a AAA credit rating.
So would you say that it would be enough of a savings to fund a project or two that we're looking at?
Uh, yes, depends on the size of the project, but we have quite a bit of, um, debt that's planned associated with the water projects. Um, some of the quality of life projects will need some debt financing for cash flow purposes. Um, so it is very important for the residents.
Yeah, and, and what it means is that when we do issue debt, more of our dollars go towards the project itself and up interest on that debt.
Okay, that's very good. And I, I just wanted to make that point, that the staff has done a phenomenal job in keeping that there and how much that's actually saving us, allowing to use that dollars for other things that are coming up rather than issuing additional debt that we need to carry, which does impact our, our tax rate. Is that fair to say?
And that's a collaboration with staff and council and the decision-making, uh, over a long period of time, so.
All right, thank you very much, appreciate it.
Councilmember Banjiavani.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, I just wanted to thank staff for, um, understanding that we had a, we had an issue last year with the, we raised water rates and we only had a, a fund of $10,000 to assist people that are seniors who are on fixed income. And I'm happy to see that we did raise that to 150,000, I believe, this year.
That sounds.
Yeah. Um, and because some of our seniors and some of our people that are on fixed incomes are really struggling with the, with the water bill. So I appreciate you guys listening to us, uh, for that.
Thank you. Um, I think that's all the questions and comments. Thank you, Kelly. Let's address item 12 first. I'll entertain, uh, discussion and/or motion. Which is property tax levy.
I'll move to approve item 12, setting the secondary property tax levy for fiscal year 2026 at 34,838,000.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Did we adopt item number 12? Please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Let's move to item 13.
I'll move to approve item 13, adopting the final budget for the period of July 1st, 2025 to June 30th, 2026 with the, uh, purchase of the Ford Lightning to be held until council has had an opportunity to, um, have our study session.
I second that.
It's been moved by Councilmember Kaprowski, seconded by the Vice Mayor. Please vote.
Can I make one quick comment? Just to correct spelling on 2261 and 2776. If we could correct the spelling on those two lines, it'd be awesome. I just happened to notice that.
So the motion is to approve with the discussion in the future about that purchase?
It's held until then. The truck is being held out until we have that discussion.
Thank, thank you.
Please vote. Motion carries seven zero. Thank you, Kelly. Thank you, Patrick. Um, congratulations, well done. Um, good job. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the special meeting and reconvene regular meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Please, uh, vote by voice vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. We're back on the regular agenda. We'll go to the consent calendar. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Anderson. Okay, to begin our consent calendar portion of the meeting, I will pass the time over to our town manager, Patrick Banjer, to provide an overview of the items on the consent calendar this evening. Patrick, over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. I'm going to run through the items on the consent agenda. Again, as always, if you have questions, don't hesitate to ask. If I can't, uh, get, provide the specific information, we'll pull up the appropriate staff member to do so. A change from, uh, tonight from previous council meetings is we are going in chronological order this time um, to follow through with your agenda and to make it easier for you to follow through with the agenda. Again, we, you will, uh, see notations on each one, which area it falls under. Strong economy, prosperous community, and exceptional built environment. Starting with agenda item number 14, which is the annexation of Ocatillo between Val Vista and Greenfield. I can summarize this, um, most simply. This is just a transaction between Maricopa County and the town of Gilbert to consolidate all the right of way along this road, so it's within the town's jurisdiction and responsibility. So we don't have two different agencies with various levels of responsibility for the road. Agenda item number 15, the refuse fleet cleaning contract under exceptional built environment. Um, high level are, we had a truck cleaning facility as part of our fleet maintenance facility. It has been inoperable for quite some time. We use that for storage now for their needs and we contract with a service to clean our trucks. It's roughly $55,000 per year and will not exceed 275,000 over five years. And the funding source for that is the solid waste and recycling residential rates paid by the, the residents receiving that service. Agenda item number 16, administration of the Retirement Health Savings Program under prosperous community. It's a motion to approve an agreement with the International City Management Association Retirement Corporation for Administration of Retirement Health Savings Program, providing a benefit that enhances employee retention and recruitment initiatives. There is no financial impact to the town as our, our, RHS is funded via employee participation. Agenda item number 17 is the purchase of two fire department pumper's apparatus under prosperous community. This would be a contract with Pierce Manufacturing for the purchase of the two pumper's to support the department's service provision of response to emergency incidents in the community. Five of the seven fire department reserve pumper's are currently at the end of a designated 15-year service life. This item helps ensure the department is equipped with reliable apparatus to meet the needs of the service. This item is supported through the General Replacement Fund with 2. roughly $4 million in the fiscal '25 budget and $330,000 in contingency from the General Replacement Fund for outfit and make ready work. And again, uh, this fund is from the general dollars that we bring into the general fund to provide for five or services. Also want to make a special notation that the town of Gilbert, representatives from the town manager's office and fire leadership negotiated a much shorter, uh, delivery time for these pumper's than is normally the case. And it was great work on their part because those delivery times are getting quite long. Agenda item number 18, Greenfield Pool Repairs and Renovation under Exceptional Built Environment. It's a contingency request and cooperative purchase J O B with Shasta Industries for Greenfield Pool Repairs and Renovations. Pool is in need of structural repairs and renovation after 20 years of use. Additionally, updated code requirements require ADA compliant and accessibility features. The project entails $1.4 million of CIP outside sources and general replacement funds and $325,000 of general replacement funds to do that work. Agenda item number 19 is a community services grant award under prosperous community. It's a motion to approve a contract with Ascend Neighborhood Assistant Program, a local nonprofit, to provide rental and utility assistance to Gilbert residents in need for $155,000. This item is part of the community services and annual nonprofit grant program and is supported through the general fund. Agenda item number 20, the water meter infrastructure and AMI maintenance service contract under exceptional built environment. It's a contract with Ferguson Enterprises LLC in the amount not to exceed roughly $6.4 million per year for the next five years. That will facilitate the maintenance of water meter infrastructure in the AMI system. This item is partially rate-supported through the water metering account as well as grant-funded with 1.9 million from the Water Smart Efficiency Grant and 3.8 million, 3.08 million from the Bucket to Lower Colorado River Conservation Grant. And I want to recognize the great work of the staff in securing those grants to help, uh, pay for this project. Agenda item number 21, A Services for CIP Trail Systems Connectivity Study under exceptional built environment. It's a services contract with Dibble and Associates Consulting Engineering for the CIP project at Queen Creek in the Sunoki Wash Trail, which will provide a study to assess connectivity from the existing trail system in the town of Queen Creek to Gilbert Regional Park. This item is supported via the general fund for the amount of $165,000. Agenda item number 22 is a change order for our license plate reader program in exceptional built environment. It's a change order with Flock Group to expand the existing program of license plate readers in the community by adding 17 additional units. That will impart add coverage to the Heritage District Garage, and that would be both of the garages in the Heritage District, as well as other areas of the town and serving as a proactive force multiplier to identify vehicle suspects wanted for crimes. The item is $142,000 per year for up to five years for the procurement of the readers and related services for a total of roughly $630,000 and is supported by the general fund. Agenda item number 23, a change order for police uniforms and equipment contract and purchase approval under exceptional built environment. Change order of the contract with Curtis Blue Line to provide police uniforms and equipment that is used to support delivery of public safety lines of service. This item increases the contracted purchase amount by $260,000 for two fiscal years. Motion to approve the expenditure of $332,000 in fiscal year '25 and $400,000 in fiscal, fiscal '26 pending budget approval, which you just granted, for the purchase of the uniforms and equipment from the general fund. Agenda item number 24, preemption traffic signals equipment grant funds and contingency under exceptional built environment. Motion for grant fund contingency in the amount of 171,000 and 100 and roadway maintenance fund contingency in the amount of just over 10,000 over fiscal year '25 and '26 to support the purchase and installation of preemption equipment on traffic signals to update approximately 214 intersections that will improve public safety response to emergencies in the community. For those of you not aware of what, what preemption equipment is, that's the, uh, equipment that our police officers and our firefighters use when responding to calls that will change the intersection to allow them to safely move through that, as well as for the residents that are using that intersection at the same time. Gilbert has participated in federal and state grant programs supporting this initiative since 2022. The $10,344 roadway maintenance fund contingency is the match requirement of the grant. All, all other terms and condition of the grant as are normal, uh, and they are, uh, have been historically in the past. Excuse me, agenda item number 25, workers' compensation fund contingency under prosperous community. Motion to approve you, the use of up to $750,000 in CIP contingency with the worker's comp fund balance as the funding source for the self-insured workers' compensation fund for claims. The current year has seen higher than expected costs associated with treatment of employee injuries and the town's excess loss coverage does not engage until a $750,000 deductible has been met. This item will support costs through the remainder of fiscal year '25. Agenda item number 27, it's jumping ahead, the appointment of pro tempore, to a pro tempore municipal judge under prosperous community. It's a motion to approve the appointment of Bruce R. Owens as Judge Pro Temp for the Gilbert Municipal Court following his retirement as a full-time judge from the court in July 2025. Agenda item number 28, purchase of insurance coverage renewal policies under prosperous community. Motion to authorize the purchase of property and equipment, public entity liability, excess liability, workers' compensation, cyber, storage tank, crime, drone, fiduciary, malicious attack, pollution, and contractor's equipment insurance for the town in the amount not to exceed 4.45 million through Marsh Insurance Brokerage for the coming fiscal year. This item is supported from the general fund. And that is all the items on the consent calendar tonight.
Thank you, Patrick. Appreciate it. Do you have any questions? All right, let's see. Um, so Councilmember Kaprowski.
Patrick, and Vice Mayor, I just wanted to confirm that item 18 for the new Greenfield Pool renovation, I, I believe I saw that, um, because this is one of our public-private partnerships, that Gilbert Public Schools will be funding 50% of this project?
Uh, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmember Kaprowski, that is correct. That is a shared pool by both agencies and we share the costs for the maintenance and, and any repairs equally.
Um, okay, so Councilmember Banjiavani.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Patrick, um, number 14, is that, um, north side of the road? South side of the road? Both sides of the road?
Mayor, Councilmember Banjiavani, I'm going to ask, who is putting on the code? Kyle Mures? Where my vision's going. Kyle Mures to come up and answer that question.
Or is that a corner of the?
I'm sorry, say that part, that last part again.
Is, are we talking about the north side of Ocatillo? The south side? Both or a corner?
It'll be a little bit of everything, yeah. It's, it's about, uh, .85 miles long. It's a strip along, um, the roadway for the construction of Ocatillo. And to make the, um, the boundaries even between the, the two communities.
Yeah, because some is town and some is county, so we're kind of.
We put it all together and then, that's how we, uh, take care of public safety along Route 2.
Thank you. Didn't have to run up here.
All right, Councilmember Lyons?
I guess this question would be for Patrick, the, uh, or, uh, Joe, the license plate readers that we have, are these in addition to what we already have in place in town?
Mayor, uh, Councilmember Lyons, yes, that is correct. These would be to supplement what we already have in place.
Okay, just a point from my perspective. I, I, I do have privacy concerns when it looks at utilizing technology like this. And, uh, I want to make sure we have policies in place to ensure those technologies aren't abused. As you know, I get ads for Hello Kitty stuff every time I talk to my wife about presents for my granddaughter. So I, I just want to make sure we have things in place that we're not abusing the, uh, technology in any way and to protect the privacy of our citizens.
Yeah, Mayor, Vice Mayor, or Mayor, Councilmember Lyons, yes. We actually had a long discussion before we started employing, uh, technology like this and put policies in place to that. Uh, and Chief Solberg also reached out to a lot of the agencies that monitor and track this kind of activity to let them know of the, uh, move we would be making in this space to answer any questions or address any concerns they had, uh, ahead of doing so. Um, and we have, had received no concerns up to this point in our use of the technology.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Torgerson?
I just wanted to confirm, although, uh, Councilman Lyons said it. Now, number 17, those Pierce trucks are not the electric trucks we were discussing earlier in the year, correct?
These are diesel trucks.
Okay, excellent.
Do we have any other questions from any of you?
I'm good with everything else.
Councilmember Torgerson? Are you?
I'm just talking to Scott, that's all.
Okay. Your line?
I'm just going to vote against it.
Okay, all right, if there's no other questions then, I will, um, move to approve the consent agenda. Items number 14 through 29. Do you have a second?
I'll second that with the caveat, uh, number 22, I would like to pull for a separate vote.
Um, you, you want to pull item 22?
22.
All right, um, so do you have a question? Scott, how do we, what do you want to do with that? Pardon me? Pardon me?
Just you all accept that item.
Okay, okay, so I will make a motion to approve Items Number 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 20, 21, 23, 24, 25, 26, 27, 28, and 29. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay, seconded by Councilmember Kroprowski. And please vote. Okay, the motion carried, 7-0. And now we'll...
I'll move to approve Item 22.
Right, the separate item, yeah, okay. So do we have questions? Apparently Councilmember Torgerson has a question on, we're bringing up Item 22.
I have no question, I'm just a no.
Okay, so, all right, well then, I make a motion to vote on Item Number 22 on the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second, the approval of Item 22.
Or just, okay, seconded by Councilmember Bon Giovanni, please vote. And the motion carried by five yes and two no. So with that, I believe I'm finished, and I'll give this back to...
I'll give it right back to you, there are no administrative items on the agenda, so communications is next.
That sounds good to me. All right, then I will start with communications from citizens. And to begin, I will read the Rules of Decorum. Oh, excuse me. Okay, "We value the participation of our community members and robust exchange of ideas. However, it is essential that this discourse remains respectful and constructive, reflecting the professionalism expected in such forms. Misinformation and personal attacks undermine the collective efforts. We do not and do not contribute to the productive dialogue necessary for our town's progress. This is an opportunity for the public to address the Town Council directly about issues impacting the town. Accordingly, the Town Council will not allow for moments of silence or playing of music or other recorded materials which could distract from the meeting, from meeting decorum or violate copyrights. While we understand and appreciate the passion our community members bring to this session, we remind everyone that clapping during the meeting is not acceptable. This practice can disrupt the flow of discussion, potentially intimidate others, and detract from the respectful atmosphere we strive to maintain. Tonight, we will invite you up to come up to the podium. When you come up to the podium, state your name and your city of residence, and you will have three minutes to directly address the Town Council on this otherwise indicated. If the current speaker will be using three minutes of another person's time, that person should state their name, the city they reside in, and acknowledge that they are donating their three minutes to the current speaker. In accordance with state law, we are unable to provide responses to the public regarding comments during this meeting. Please be assured that your concerns and input are heard and valued." So our first speaker, we actually, we have one speaker, will be Frank B., and Red Thomas is donating his three minutes, so if Red could, yeah, he can acknowledge from his seat if you want, that's fine. And, all right, you'll have six minutes.
I am a resident of Mesa, and I would like to donate my time to Frank.
All right. Is that...
I thought I could cheat. My name is Red Thomas, I am a resident of Mesa, and I donate my time to Frank.
All right, thank you, Red.
Hello, I'm Frank Banacheski. Hello, I'm Frank Banacheski, I'm a resident of Gilbert. I am the commander of the American Legion Post 39. I've been in charge for three years now. Just so you guys know, American Legion Post has over 1,000 veterans, it's one of the youngest veterans posts in the whole state, in the country, actually. We also have 400 sons and 500 auxiliary members, almost 2,000 members. We've also donated over $100,000 to charities in a year, and we also help participate in preventing suicides of our veterans, just like this Tuesday where I helped disarm a veteran. Why am I here? We have two concerns. One is there's a road improvement project next to our Legion Post that will take out our property, several parking spaces that will affect our post there, and we have grave concerns that will hinder us and the veteran community. What you guys may have heard about the road going through that parking area, we've already seen the building from the furniture store taken down for that. The second is, we would like a war monument, begin the process of that either in Veterans' Park or the, I believe it's called the Kids' Park right next to us. And third, I heard Jim, Councilman Jim, speak today about the homes and having homes in the community. I can tell you, as a resident, we're tired of rental properties, and completely support Jim in having more either townhouses, condos, or a, actually just residential thing. A lot of people feel that way, and I'm speaking from someone that's in the community, constantly talking to members of our community, so I appreciate Jim and you speaking about that. So, thank you very much, and I know you can't respond to this, so thank you.
Okay, thank you.
We can respond, and this entire council thanks you because they unanimously voted for that, not just me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. All right, Mayor, you get it back.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor. Future meetings, you can see that we have a couple of study sessions, special meetings related to certain items. One is the morden commission application process, the other is having to do with electric vehicles and the process of doing that, so we'll have those scheduled in the future. We'll go to Communications, first a report from the Town Manager.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, my apologies for having to hear from you so much today. We also have another future meeting item that was submitted regarding citizen comments, so we'll get that added to the agenda as well and get that scheduled. Tonight, for manager's update, I've got a, I will start with Department Division Highlights. Up first is Monday, June 16th, is Artificial Intelligence Appreciation Day. Yes, there is Appreciation Day, Appreciation Day for everything now. Monday, the 16th, is AI Appreciation Day, and we've done a lot in that space, as you are well aware, and much more to come up. That is being led by our Eugene Mejia, our AI Strategy and Transformation Officer, and he's done a lot of work in the last fiscal year around aligning our vision and establishing the strategy and vision for our approach, the governance and framework that we'll operate under, and innovation and evaluation of the many products that are being developed that continue to grow by the day. To date, the organizational impact is, we've deployed seven generative AI tools in the past 18 months. Grammarly, Microsoft 365 Copilot, Adobe Express, Adobe Firefly, Adobe AI Assistant, Canva, and Marketplace.City. We've piloted six technology solutions while exploring six additional pilots. We've launched organization-wide trainings in partnership with the organizational development team, and we've created digital tools, learning hub for employee training. Also within this space is our performance management program that you heard from Amy Ashworth this evening, as well as Eugene in the upcoming dashboards that will be made public tomorrow, and that team has done incredible work, and I won't repeat everything that Amy said today, but cross-departmental collaboration, the data-informed decision-making, and the strategic goal tracking, which is so important, not only for this organization but the community on the whole, and I highly encourage all of you when you get the chance to dive into those dashboards and see what we've made public for our community. We've created 156 Power BI reports. Power BI, for those of you who are not familiar with that technology, it's a Microsoft product, and it's the tool we use to create those dashboards. We've created over 100 department goals, metrics, and targets approved and in the process, and we've had over 30 department stat meetings held just in fiscal year 24. We've improved cross-departmental alignment with coaching sessions and onboarding materials. We've launched performance management portals for consistent data visualization. We've soft-launched our WIG tracking app for streamlined and measured tracking, and we've launched 15 new public dashboards and relaunched three redesigned dashboards to make that information that we have to communicate more easily understandable by our average resident. Moving on to retirements, recognitions, and awards, and I'll start by congratulating Recruit Class 25-01. We had 12 recruits successfully complete the 16-week academy. The recruits began working on our engines and ladders on Monday, and the recruits will spend the next nine months in the field as probationary firefighters, but congratulations to our new recruits. The next academy is already about to launch, as we have a lot of positions to bring onboard, but congratulations to those recruits, they did an exceptional job, and we think it'll be a great addition to our fire and rescue teams. Also want to recognize retirements, it says happy retirement, but I can tell you with the leaders that we're saying goodbye to in our police department, we're not overly happy about it, but we're very grateful for the work and service they provided this community over decades, beginning with Lieutenant Chris Timmons. Chris is familiar to many of us. Chris and his wife Autumn have launched a nonprofit that provides autism training to first responders. The Gilbert Police Department was the very first agency that was trained and certified by them. They are continuing to now provide that training across the state and are even branching out nationally. Chris is a longtime leader in our police department, and he will be sorely missed by everybody who had the opportunity to work with him through the years, and Chris was in our Peer Support and Employee Wellness Unit and the Hiring Unit. Next, Detective Ken Shipley, he retired on May 29th of 2025, he was in Internal Affairs. Officer Craig Avery retired on May 30th, he was a School Resource Officer. Detective Kyle Green retired on June 5th, he was in our Property Crimes Unit. And Officer Gary Weiderhold will retire on June 12th, and he's a bike officer in our Heritage District. We wish them the best of luck in retirement, and again, we thank them for all their years of service to our community. We want to recognize the Office of Communications and Engagements, they received a 2025 Video Awards. For the 2025 State of the Town Video, they won the Platinum Award, and for the Discover Gilbert commercial, they won a Gold Award. There was tremendous work by that team, we're very proud of the work they do, and it's great to see them get recognition that is well-deserved for the quality of what they do. Moving on to organizational accomplishments, Gilbert was recently recognized and ranked as the third safest city in Arizona in the 2025 Safest Cities Report issued by SafeWise. If you get a chance to look in that, you're also seeing Gilbert is far and away the largest city. The other two cities that are one and two are much, much smaller than Gilbert, so we're very proud of that, very proud to have a safe community, and again, very proud of everybody who plays a role in that, especially our police department. And with that, that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Thank you. With that Video Award, I'm going to ask for a larger contract, Patrick.
What's your residual on?
Yeah. Reports from the council, Councilmember Lyons, I know he has one.
I do, thank you. I just wanted to say thank you for everybody that supported the Veterans Advisory Board in our Memorial Day service out here on the town lawn. We had a turnout of about 370 in attendance, which was the largest we've had so far, and we really appreciated the families, especially the Gold Star families and veterans who came out to honor our nation's fallen. At the same time, up here on the next slide should be a QR code. If you guys would like to get involved, we're looking for volunteers. People are welcome to come to any of our board meetings and sit in and observe. We want to do a more proactive outreach into the community, and so there's opportunities there to get involved and to help out, so scan the code. If you have any questions, please feel free to get with me, and I'd be glad to talk to anyone who has any questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Bon Giovanni.
Thank you, Mayor. This morning, most of the morning, I was trained to teach dementia-friendly to businesses, so I'll be working with the Chamber of Commerce, Chamber of Commerce, to train some of our great businesses here in Gilbert, how to run a Gilbert, I mean a dementia-friendly organization. So now from Parks and Rec, we're having our Senior Center Lual. Join us on Friday, June 13th, from 2:00 p.m. to 4:00 p.m. at the Gilbert Community Center for the Senior Lual. It will be a fun afternoon of dancing, delicious treats, endless fun, and memorable snapshots. There'll also be giveaways and raffles. Aloha.
Vice Mayor.
Okay, I wanted to talk a little bit about a project that we are doing, that Gilbert is doing, and economic development is doing, and it's our new project. Just got approved after years of work from prior councils to get this done, is the New Heritage Park. So I don't know how many of you have heard about that, but I'm going to give you a little bit of information. So we officially broke ground, they officially broke ground on May 22nd, and this is in the Heritage District, and it is a full, I believe, and Patrick, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe it's a full city block, and I welcome any comments from you as well. And so it's marking the beginning of an 800,000-square-foot mixed-use development, and the milestones launch the first phase, it'll be done, I believe, in three phases. And so it'll mark the downtown destination designed to enhance the vibrancy of Gilbert with a dynamic mix of restaurants, retail, residential spaces, and a community-focused square. Heritage Park spans an entire city block, so that answered my question, at Gilbert Road and Juniper Avenue, creating a hub for engagement and growth. The initial phase will introduce approximately 47,000 square feet of retail and dining options, a multifamily residential community featuring 288 residences, more than 300 surface parking spaces, and a welcoming public square. And that public square is huge, it's really, really going to be something when this is done. The central plaza will showcase water features, mature landscaping, public art installations, and dedicated walking and biking paths, fostering a lively and interactive atmosphere. Heritage Park has already announced three new restaurants with additional dining, retail tenants to be revealed. Future phases will further expand the development with 125-room hotel, office space, and additional parking, solidifying Heritage Park as a premier destination in downtown Gilbert. So that's just one of the really great things that are happening in Heritage District, and I myself, I am so excited to see all this come in and everyone getting to take advantage of this.
Thank you. Any other reports? Councilmember Torgerson?
I just wanted to say quickly regarding that, that property was owned by two families that had a long history in Gilbert, and I'd say about nine years ago, they had agreed, Chapman and Horn families had agreed the highest and best use that they could agree on was to allow the town of Gilbert to buy that property to help create something in the downtown, and it's been a long time since that discussion happened, but obviously the town has been involved and gotten, I believe, a return that those families are probably going to be very proud of in selling their property to the town, which in turn sells that to the developer. I just wanted to recognize those families for what they did for us several years ago.
Thank you. From the Office of the Mayor, I haven't got anything in particular except to, again, express my gratitude and thanks to the staff for all the work that you do. For as many years as I've been affiliated with Gilbert in one way or another, my impression has always been with the staff working in Gilbert is that they refuse to fail, whether we're the smallest group in the state or the largest, whatever, but that's what I've always noticed, is they refuse to fail in the work that they do, so thank you for everything that you do for us. With that, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I make, well, I make a motion to adjourn.
We are adjourned. We are adjourned.